Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
Tell them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's stand. I am standing in for Sandy and Brian tonight. There were some flight delays that made them unable to attend today's meeting. First item on the agenda is public input. Is there anybody in person here for public input? Scott, is there anybody on the line? Okay, so we're going to move right into, uh, there's no president's comments, so superintendent's report starting with the audit committee.
Yeah, so the first item of business under my report is the audit committee. So we have someone, Sarah can think a little bit about that.
Thank you very much. Okay, good evening, everyone. Sarah McHale is chair of the audit committee. So we just had a meeting earlier today at 4:00 PM. And we reviewed and discussed the corrective action plan for the internal audit and also for the claims audit. So I'd like to make a couple of amendments to the corrective action plan that were agreed upon at the audit committee meeting this afternoon. So first, I'd like to go over, um, the corrective action plan in response to the issues identified in the 2021 through 2022 risk assessment update report prepared by our internal auditors, Rocky Smith LLC. So the first item under the audit recommendation number one, we'd like to strike the verbiage of implementation plan of action and replace that language with the following. District officials will maintain our current practice of not posting the district's internal audit reports and corrective action plan to the district's websites due to them containing confidential operating procedures and/or sensitive information. District officials will revisit this recommend recommendation in the future. Next, for audit recommendation number two, we would like to change the projected implementation dates from July 1st, 2023 to August 1st, 2023. Under audit recommendation number 10, we would like to amend the projected implementation date from June 30th, 2024 to December 31st, 2023. For audit recommendation number 11, we would like to make an amendment to the implementation plan of action. We'd like to replace the language that is currently there with the following language. The district will move forward with the NIST NIST gap analysis. The director of technology is working with the Eastern Suffolk Bosse cybersecurity team to determine if this service is included in the cybersecurity services we are already committed to with the Bosse's regional information center, parentheses, RIC. If Bosse's cannot provide this service, district officials will obtain the service through an outside contractor. And that's all the amendments for this report.
Thank you, Sam.
On the next report, the corrective action for the claims audit for the period of July 1st, 2020 to March 31st, 2022, we have the following amendments. For audit recommendation number one, we would like to replace the language for the implementation plan of action with the following verbiage. The claims auditor will perform a thorough, deliberate, and independent audit in accordance with board policies, including confirming sales tax is not included and staff acknowledge the receipt of goods and services. In addition, the claim auditor will compare the invoices or claims to previously approved contracts and/or department head approval of invoices or claims to previously approved contracts. And that is the only amendment for this corrective action plan.
Thank you.
And that is all I have.
So Mary, in our consent agenda and board members, um, items eight point one and eight point two are where we are supposed to, um, vote on approving those plans. So we're going to have to approve it as amended. So Mary, do you need us to take those out of the consent agenda and write on them now? Or should we just continue to vote on them and then Sarah will just give you the replacement? Okay, great. So we'll just take it as right as part of the regular consent agenda, but just everyone please be advised that the the documents that are included as attachments in eight point one and eight point two are being replaced. And that's why Sarah read them out loud so that we're all on notice as to what the text of them is.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm sad.
So the next item on the superintendent's report is, uh, we have our robotics team here tonight and, um, I've been updating the board, but they've really had a tremendous year. Um, they had some great success at the regional competition and that was held at Hostra. And so tonight they're here to, uh, sort of show us their robot. But before we bring them up, I just want to thank the advisors and I thank Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Rule, Ms. Gutierrez, um, the parent volunteer from Southampton, Ms. Mitchell. Um, this is a pretty big team and Ms. McCarthy told me that at any given time there were up to 48 students who participated. Um, many of the competitions in and around 40 students were planning on sending 30 to the national competition. Um, and these guys have really, uh, worked hard for everything that they've achieved. And they really have really cool uniforms as well. So, uh, without further ado, I'll, I'll turn it over to you guys. Come on up. Yeah.
Go to the podium.
Yeah, because then you get these things.
Okay.
Yeah.
You should find it.
Right, okay. Alright, um, so the Pearson Robotics team, uh, Chloe and Tyler are our presidents for this year. And, um, Tyler has focused more on robot stuff. Chloe has focused more on business stuff. We, um, and we were planning on, we're planning on demonstrating the robots. You can see a little bit of how it goes. Do you want to go do that now? Yeah, so the, uh, while he's getting that ready, the robot, um, they launched competition the first weekend in January um, with the tasks to accomplish this year. It includes moving cones and inflatable cubes to two platforms. These are mock-up platforms. Um, it's a full-length, it's a full field, probably the size of a basketball court. And we compete with, on an alliance of three robots against another three robots. Um, so the kids design and build and program the robot from scratch. So Tyler and Dustin are going to do a little demonstration on how we can pick up cubes and all and place them. Usually we run, this is, they call it tethered. We usually run without a tether, but it's easier to do it tethered here.
Um, it was mainly so that at competition, the, um, administrative table can actually interface with the robot bolts on the field. Um, however, once we go to competition, the radio needs to be specifically configured for that. So at this moment, we weren't able to use it. So we're going to enable the robot.
You might have to pick up the driver's seat.
Pick it up.
Move forward a bit.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, to at the competition, like right now, we're in this space and he's moving very slow, slowly. The robot moves between 14 and 18 feet a second, so it is a very fast robot. Um, so yeah, so that a robot work. And then he did, um, the award we won was the first impact award and for that we have to do a presentation and video. So, um, Chloe's going to do the presentation and the video. I don't know. Oh, there's Lucy.
Okay. Um, so the judges don't really know much about our community, so we like to tell them kind of where we're from, which is the small town on Long Island, as you all know. Um, and this kind of just gives them a sense of what we're working with. And since a lot of the other teams around the world have a lot of large corporations near them, so we're kind of isolated from that environment, but we use it to our advantage. So then we give them a general overview of Pearson High School. Um, so they can see that it's a very small school, but we are very successful and we put a lot of effort into STEAM and engineering. Um, our membership has nearly doubled in the last season. Um, in 2021, in COVID year, we had five members. So this year we have 45, which is crazy. Um, and we also work to increase the gender and ethnic diversity on our team. And this is the most diverse team we've had ever. We strive to have a very positive influence on the younger generations and we, this year we have increased our community outreach. So as a team, our mission is to encourage students to pursue education and careers in STEAM-related fields. And we really just want to inspire them to become leaders and innovators and enhance their skills. So in July of 2023, um, we went to Camp Good Creek, which is a grieving camp for children who recently lost a close family member. Uh, so we worked with them three days a week and we made little robot crafts to promote STEAM within our community. Um, so it was basically just cardboard and wires and batteries and the kids really enjoyed it. They all wanted to go back to their schools and try a robotic team of their own or join one. Um, and we worked to inspire creativity there. Um, and then next month in August, we did the cardboard boat race. So this was, um, an activity that we did for team building. And we wanted to increase the awareness of first and Team 28 and kind of just promote the program. Um, and we really fostered creativity and engineering. So basically what this was, was we had to build a full-size robo out of only cardboard and duct tape. As you can imagine, that's a challenge.
We didn't sink.
Um, so this is our 28th year as Team 28. So we wanted to highlight to everyone all the accomplishments that we have had in recent years. And naturally, our most recent one is at the first Long Island Regional. We won the impact award, which gets us to Worlds in Houston this year. So what we strive to do is promote diversity and develop lifelong skills, whether that be in engineering or in the business and really just working together. Um, we've increased our community involvement and really built up a brand for ourselves and we've made a name for ourselves. Um, we do a lot of team building, especially on the trips, just so everyone feels welcome and included. And we want to spread first message to promote STEAM and encourage others to go into engineering and arts and mechanic next related fields. And this year we have done amazing work in increasing our sponsorship to foster sustainability for future years. So we'd like to just take a moment and thank a couple of our top sponsors. Um, as I said previously, we are isolated from large corporations. For instance, some teams are sponsored by NASA and crazy things like that. So we are sponsored by local businesses and organizations. And we treasure that tight-knit community that we've created with our sponsors. Um, for instance, we create, um, hand packaged and hand-delivered letters to each of our sponsors, just so they know how much we are grateful for them. And then our networking, um, by team members secured a zebra sponsorship for this year. We actually are working with a zebra engineer that helped us with our robot. Um, to improve the team, we revamped our business plan to foster sustainability. So in future years, the team knows exactly what works and what didn't for us. Um, we mentor middle school students on the team. We have a few eighth graders on the team right now. Um, and they're just amazing. They're always there to help and they're just there to learn. They love it. Um, this year we also joined with Southampton, um, high school because they do not have the resources to start a first team of their own yet, so we brought them on until they are able to do that. Um, and then we are just inspiring the younger generations to get involved in engineering. And we did that through elementary demonstrations in the past and Camp Good Creek this year. So this was our team right after we won the first impact award. Everyone was just out of their minds excited. And then this is the video that Lucy created.
Say hello to Team 28.
We have a whopping 43 members and we are located in Sag Harbor, New York, which is on the east end of Long Island.
It had many accomplishments throughout the past few years. Here are just a few. Another activity we did this summer was the Riverhead Cardboard Boat Races. We ended two teams and we built two boats completely out of duct tape and cardboard. Our goals were team building, promoting our team interest and promoting engineering and problems all on.
We recycled 700 pounds of old aluminum from our shop that we've been collecting for over 28 years.
We promoted the business and social media components. Had the administration create an agreement with our neighboring school district, Southampton, to allow them to send members to our program with the hope of building our interests and perhaps having their own team in the future.
In recent years, we've shown off our robot at Pearson Spirit Night to encourage further recruitment.
We bake fells, bake beginners, and pancake breakfast inside Harvard to include family members of all ages.
And we update all of our social media pages daily. Despite all these positives, we definitely have some problems on the face.
Our biggest problem that we have is that we are located in such a small town on the far east end of Long Island. So we are isolated from the large corporate sponsors. Most teams have access to them.
Mayor Energy Group, Yon Hampton, Jameson Basin, Masonary, Sag Harbor Fire Department, Teachers Association of Sag Harbor, Sag Harbor Ambulances, and New York City Shoppers.
Yeah, thanks very much, everybody. You guys don't need to hang out tonight at all, but before you leave, does the board have any comments or questions?
Just how often do you guys, uh, practice or are they called practices that aren't yet? Like, can you explain a little bit how about how you guys operate?
Usually we call them meetings. Um, however, we, we have meetings usually about six, eight a week, two hours after school. And those are usually, uh, times where we get together and the robotic team downstairs where it's like programming outreach and building robots.
And is that during the build season or is that throughout the year?
We also have certain off-season periods where we work on, um, side projects. Uh, for instance, the, uh, Camp Good Reef and building those cardboard boats.
Off-season, we usually meet twice a week.
Okay.
Um, for two to three hours and then during the build season, Monday through Friday for two to three hours and then Saturdays are usually four or five hours.
And some of you guys were in Cinderella this weekend, so I don't know how you guys are even functioning. That's amazing.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Does the school provide any funding or are you exclusively seeking sponsorship? And how does that, how does the program get support?
The school, the school provides funding, um, which entails not only the staff that works with the students, but also sending them away to the regional competitions. We had one in Long Island. We had one, I think, in Albany.
Albany, yeah.
And, uh, the board's going to be voting tonight on sending them to Houston. Um, but as the students said themselves, uh, corporate sponsorship is really important, um, for other reasons, so, yeah.
So this year, to give you an idea, we did a whole business plan and with all of the money, um, that we put into the program, I think it was $46,000 and that does not include the trip to Nationals. So although we do get quite a bit of funding from the district, it is imperative for them to raise money through sponsorship as well.
You still needed 46 on top of what the school provided you that you had to.
No, no, that's what we did for the regular season and then the Nationals is on top of the 46. The 46 was combined from the school district as well as what the kids had raised.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary.
I was gonna add, this is super impressive. As an engineer myself, I'm just, this like blows me away. The capabilities that you guys were able to put together with this and I can tell there's been a lot of time and effort and just great, um, examples for the community and for the school and just can't be happier for you guys. Unbelievable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, take a break for a moment so that you guys know.
So we need people to get those.
Yeah.
Get the battery.
Powered.
Uh, no, we're doing.
Yeah, it's a lot lighter than it was over again.
So for competition, it's supposed to be like 150 pounds, so we bought like ankles and had it strapped all over it. Like, oh, it's light today. Because it usually weighs about 150 pounds.
All right, um, next is cell phone update.
So, next is a cell phone update and, um, as per what was discussed at the last board meeting, following the presentation by representative from yonder, um, Ms. Carriero spent some time, uh, providing an overview of what it would take for implementation next year. So I'm going to cover that real briefly. I didn't put the slides together. She did all the work. Next slide. So this is just a review of, of how it works and, and basically, uh, as was discussed at the last meeting, it's a case. And when students come into the building, they take their cell phone, they put it into the case. There's a lock, um, that's activated and the only way that that lock, uh, can be unlocked is with a magnet that is supplied by the company. Uh, and the, the end result of that is that the cell phones are out of reach for the students during the school day, uh, so that they can focus on school and then the phones. Uh, next slide. So the process, uh, in terms of the nuts and bolts of how we would implement it at school, basically there, there currently are four access points in the building. There's Jermaine, uh, parking lot, there's the main entrance, there's the sixth grade wing, and there's the cafeteria. So it would be incumbent upon the district, the middle school, high school, to have staff stationed at each of those four entrances to facilitate what I just talked about, which is when students hand over their phone, put them in the pouch, and they're locked. Um, and then, you know, each magnet, uh, can really address about 120 students, so we'd have to order a number of magnets to be able to address that. Uh, next slide.
Good question on the points of entry.
Yep.
The idea behind the cafeteria is that these kids after school go out to the courts or is it for?
No, so in the morning, our seniors, because there's limited parkings, we're in the village, they park all along the back.
So they're, they're actually entering now.
Yeah. So in terms of the implications for staff, um, obviously, not obviously, but we'd have one staff member in the Jermaine lot entrance, one each at the sixth grade entrance and the cafeteria and two at the high school, middle school, and main entrance, which is on Division Street. Um, we would, uh, address those staffing needs with current staff. So it would be a combination of administrators and monitors, um, just being deployed to meet the need. And we don't see the need for additional staff or expenses related to that. Next slide. So the cost, uh, based on the current enrollment, uh, grade six through 12, which is 525, they break it down as to $19 a student for 23, 24, plus the shipping costs. So the total, when you add the middle school and the high school up, is just shy of 11,000, 10, 9, 7, 250. Um, and then the renewal for subsequent years, uh, is around $7,500, 74, 41, 88. And then the renewal for subsequent years is around seventy-five hundred dollars, seventy-four, forty-one, eighty-eight. Next slide. I think that's it. So that's pretty much an overview of how we would make it happen. And with the board's approval, we would move forward with implementing that effective September two thousand and twenty-three for grades six through twelve.
So the phone is going to remain in each student's possession. It's just going to be in that pouch?
Yes.
Have we thought about if the kids just go out and buy magnets on Amazon and open them? Because I heard they're like ten bucks.
Well, we had a, we had the gentleman from yonder address that question.
It's like a heavy duty magnet and as much as you think you can use, like buy one on Amazon, it's next to near impossible to help the, is your way to get it out. It's actually to break open the pouch.
Because we have a policy now, they're not supposed to be using the phone. I guess it's just, it's very hard to monitor.
Yeah. I mean, we have a teacher here. I don't want to call on you, Ms. Federico, but it is pretty difficult to monitor if you're in a large class.
It could be. I mean, there were times before COVID, like in my room, I had a couch that kids who took their phones out, they just had to put them in the pouch. And they picked them up after class, but in the halls and it is a lot. And it's, you know, it's, there's more now, more kids from four years ago have access to phones and more younger kids.
Yeah. And one of the things that I noticed that's just striking is that sometimes you go into the lunchroom and instead kids communicating with each other, you see, you know, a hundred kids like this. And my suspicion, and this is speculation, but I think it's a fair chance that it will come to fruition, is that there's going to be a lot of research that's going to come out in the next five to 10 years, which is going to show the detrimental impacts of cell phones and unfettered access to them on adolescent development. So if we can be forward-thinking and limited, I think that's, that's sort of a thoughtful way to go.
Yeah. And the fact that they're already deployed in a thousand schools, you know, we're not the first to track. So this.
Yeah, I think, I think one thing that the sales rep and we under said is there's going to be people who don't, who circumvent, right? They're going to, there's going to be people who circumvent, but there's just a higher rate of compliance when you're actually asked to do this thing versus you just see everybody taking other phones. Oh, let me take my phone out too.
I like the goal a lot. I mean, I, I think it's, I agree with Jeff and, you know, we first put this cell phone policy in place and I thought it was great at the time, but during COVID and everything else, it just exploded. I feel like I could use one myself sometimes, but the, I'm just wondering about the mechanics of it, like, do we, other than the sales, like the other schools, we have a sense that they're.
I talked to people from that, I'm so close with my colleagues, colleagues in the city that are two different schools in it. They said it actually really works and their implementation works because the kids still have possession over it. So they still feel like they, their phone and we're not taking it away from them. They said the hardest part of the first two weeks of implementation, everyone has to be on the same page.
Yeah. And what the rule is what, like what?
So that's the one part that we also need to address still is that between now and September, we're going to need to adopt the policy on it. Yonder provides sample policies. They gave us the link to it. So that's just another piece we're going to have to do so that we can actually work through that. So whether it's all phones and all watches, is it just all phones? Is it, you know, what, what, what exceptions make sense, right? So you're going to have some exceptions for kids that are monitoring insulin. You're going to have some exceptions in other situations where people have to go to the office and, you know, check in and use the magnet in the office for that stuff. So we just need to be able to address all that so that coming in September, it is possible for everybody to comply with the rules that are in place.
And the thought is to do it for middle school and high school.
Right. And I think to Jordana's point, it'll probably be an appeal process that is set up with a, a committee of teachers and administrators that addresses all of those situations, because there are going to be people who are opposed to this policy as well. We're going to try to appeal it sometimes for valid reasons and sometimes for reasons that perhaps are not valid.
They did point out, you know, there were, you can take the magnet to a classroom and unlock all the children's pouches if something's required for a specific class. And that, you know, they gave throw examples like that, which maybe address.
Unflexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, distractionally. But I think it's a step in the right direction. I had said at the last board meeting that when I was a principal, six or seven years ago, maybe it was five years ago, my attitude back then was that this technology is here to stay and that the more prudent way to go was to teach students to use it responsibly rather than ban it. But the last five or six years have sort of shown me that that was perhaps not the way to go. And that we haven't been successful as a school or as a culture in, you know, addressing this thoughtfully so that we minimize the effects on children, the detrimental effects. So I think that's why we're at where we're at.
And I just think, you know, it's very, I think it's very reasonable cost to extend to see, right? I think spending nineteen dollars per student, ten thousand as a school for, for the next year to see if we like it is, is money well spent.
So what, you want to vote on this tonight?
I don't think it's a vote. I think it was more just coming back to you to present to you the plan that we have for moving forward.
Okay. I like, I think it takes the onus off the teachers and the staff during the day to monitor that stuff to a large extent.
Own the stuff for kids too, just the pay pressure.
Yeah.
No, I mean, that's huge.
Yeah. I think it's a little bit uncharted territory, just like all of this has been and will continue to be, but I think it sort of makes sense right now.
So that'll just be a contract that shows up on another agenda sometime soon, along with, you know, a draft of policy or something?
Correct.
I like the goal very much. I think, yes. Talk about implementation mechanics. It sounds like we're doing it. So okay, it sounds like a good thing.
Any other thoughts or questions? So the, so the last piece of the superintendent's report, you know, unfortunately, last week we had, I don't even know if it was last week, but within the last 10 days, we had this horrendous incident that took place in Nashville, which seems to be unfortunately a repeating pattern in our country. In two thousand and twenty-two, there were fifty-one school shootings. So this is something that happens all too much, too regularly. But tonight, what I thought I would do is provide an update on the status of our security program here within the district. We do some historical facts and then sort of highlight or touch upon some things that were primarily focused on. So I'll start with just talking a little bit about what is currently in place. So if you go back to the time of Columbine, which was the first real bad school shooting in the United States, after that, there were a lot of policies, legislation that came out related to school security and safety. And there've been different iterations of that, but basically in New York State, all school districts, public schools, have school district safety plans and building level safety plans. And those plans speak specifically to scenarios that might happen in school that could potentially endanger students and lay out the procedural steps and protocols that school districts should take in order to protect the students under their supervision. Those, those plans are not public for obvious reasons. Staff familiarizes themselves with those plans every year. And we conduct, we being the school district, conduct for what they call lockdown drills every year. And a lockdown drill is basically where an alarm is activated, a voice comes over the loudspeaker, it's usually the building principal, and the students basically shelter in a room and everything is locked down. And there are some specifics related to that that I won't get into, but the goal is to provide seconds, minutes, seconds is the word that the FBI uses for law enforcement personnel to be able to arrive to minimize the damage. And those drills that we do in Sag Harbor, we're really lucky to have a very good relationship with the Sag Harbor Village Police. Every drill that we conduct is with many representatives from the police department present. So the way it typically goes is we hold the drill, they're present, they're doing it with us. And then after the drill, we review what went well, if there's something we need to tweak, whether it's with regard to, to a door being open, whether it's with regard to something perhaps not functioning the way it was supposed to from a tech standpoint, thankfully that doesn't happen too often, but those kinds of drills that we do, school districts throughout New York State do. In addition to those drills, we obviously also have all the fire drills. We do eight of those a year so that we make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect the students that are here. In addition to those drills, it's important for the public to know that Sag Harbor has made a significant investment over the last, I would say, seven or eight years in bringing our school district up to where it should be with regard to technology related to infrastructure. So Scott, can you bring up that slide? And is there a way to enlarge it or is that? That's better. Thanks. So this goes back to the year, that's not it. I need to share it out to the public. So this goes back to the year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. And you have the vendor, you have the cost, and you have the notes related to the significant steps that have been taken. And so you'll see that every year, we, we being the school district, has undertaken steps related to improving our security system. And the sum total since two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, I think it's just shy of a million dollars. I can't see that, Scott. Nine twenty-nine. So, so from a, from a, I guess a commitment from the Board of Education to security, the Board of Education historically has been very, very strong in its commitment to security, as you would expect. But despite all the drills we do and the investment we've made in technology, given the importance of school security, the administrators this summer were sitting down saying, you know, we have all this in place, but how can we make it perhaps even better? So this summer, we interviewed a few consultants and recently the Board of Education approved a consultant who is currently doing an evaluation of our systems. And that, that person is really focusing on a couple of areas. Number one, obviously, is the infrastructure that you see there in terms of making sure that we have the most up-to-date technology that's out there, that's available. Because we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect students. We want to make sure that it's aligned between the buildings so that there's nothing that's not working as well as it, as it could be. We've been doing this analysis year in, year out. We just want to see if we can do it even better. And then we really want to look at our personnel in the area of, you know, what are the duty statements? What are the goals? Really, I said that backwards. What are the goals of our security system? Let's take, relook at them. It's not only, it's, it's protecting the students who are under our charge, but how do we go about that most thoughtfully? Establishing some really concrete goals and then having our duty statements relate very specifically to those goals. And we're getting some assistance in that process because I think we could do an even better job than we're already doing. And the goal will be to provide regular updates to the board and to implement some of these recommendations once the board's made aware of them throughout the year. So I just thought that would give you a quick update and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I thank you for presenting it in that way because I think that's something we've all struggled with over the last few years is when people ask, well, what have you done security-wise as a school? We can't actually tell anybody, right? We can't say, it would be a security risk to publicly explain a lot of the specific things we've done. So by showing kind of what vendors we've used, I think that at least shows that we've been trying, but like you said, we have, we have some, some more work to do. And I like that we're using a consultant that's in the security business to help us figure that out because I think if you were going to pull a hundred people in this district, a hundred people would have very different ideas about what they think the priorities should be for the school security-wise. And very few of them are experts in that. And just like, I'm not a teacher, I can't talk about what my kid's math curriculum should be. I might have two or three things that I've already expressed to Mr. Nichols about what I think might be good security ideas, but why is my opinion any better than anyone else's? So I'm glad that we have someone that's in the security field actually going to help us advise us on that.
Other comments, questions? All right, that, that does it for the superintendent's report.
Right, onto the principal.
Tonight, I told the principals that we were not going to proceed with the principal's network. And then we're just going to move on to the consent agenda or whatever's next on the agenda.
School President's Administrator's Report, Budget Presentation. Hey, so good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to go through the last two pieces of our budget. And that is for People for Sales Services, which includes special ed, our social workers and psychology budgets, and also our FOSI's budget. We're going to talk about our updated revenue projections also. And we're also going to go through a full review of the budget towards the end. So we actually reduced the budget slightly and we're going to, we're going to explain the reason for that. And it had to do with the UPK funding that we, that we're promised. So our proposed budget right now is forty-eight million, sixty-three thousand, twenty-seven dollars. We have a budget-to-budget increase of four point five percent. Previously, we presented four point seven five percent. Our property tax levy limit was four point one six percent. So that's our state imposed limit. And our tax levy increase is much lower. Our tax levy increase for next year that we're proposing is one point eight eight percent. The, the, the way we were able to do this was just because of our strong financial, financial condition right now. And we have been adding to our reserves. We did have a reserves plan presentation back in December where we said that we would actually appropriate some of our reserve funds to support the budget this year. So all of that is being done in, in, to align with my reserves plan. So the projected tax levy is forty-two million, one hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And as I said, the tax levy limit is, is under, the tax levy increase is under the tax levy limit by almost a million dollars. The budget that we're proposing for next year preserves all programs, all extracurricular activities, athletics, the continued investment in facilities, maintenance projects, instructional technology, and equipment replacement. So this is where I'm going to show you, we made the change with the UPK funding. The state budget still has not been adopted. They actually just had an extension to the state budget, which is supposed to be adopted on April first. They extended the budget adoption date to April tenth. So we're not going to actually have our final state aid numbers until, until around that time. So, but for now, everything else stayed the same except we pulled the UPK funding out of our revenue line here. So this was the first year that we received funding for our UPK program. We were not sure at the time if we were actually going to be able to collect these funds, if our program was in, actually met all the requirements of the grant. So we did go ahead and we went through the grant process and we will receive that funding this year. So we had, but since this funding is considered a grant and aid, we had to pull it out of the general fund budget and we actually are pulling also the expense out of the general fund budget. So the state had promised us two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for next year in UPK funding. But that two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, which I mentioned during a previous presentation, was funding for forty-six students. So currently, we have thirty-seven district residents attending. So next year, we don't, we don't think that we're going to have anywhere close to forty-six students attending. So we budgeted or projected that we would have thirty-two students attending next year. So we took thirty-two students and multiplied that by the fifty-four hundred dollars aid that we would receive per student. And that came out to a hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars worth of funding. So we, it was, we pulled the two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars out of the revenue side and we also pulled out a hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars out of the expense side to pay for the pre-K teacher salaries. So that had the overall effect of reducing the budget-to-budget increase and bringing the budget down to a four point five percent increase instead of a four point seven five percent increase. Everything else on the slide stayed the same. We did have to increase our appropriated fund balance slightly to make up for the difference. And we'll explain, this explains it a little bit more in detail. And this goes on to say that since these funds are considered a grant and aid and accounted for in the special. and accounted for in the special aid fund, the expense and the revenue were removed from the general fund budget. And as a result, we did make that reduction. So for the current year, we kept the expense and we kept the revenue in the general fund budget because we didn't actually know if we were going to receive the fund. Last year, it was very uncertain whether or not if we went through the application process, if we were going to get the money. But we can feel confident now that we will receive the funding. So we are pulling it out of the general fund budget. And that's really the, um, the explanation for the, for the reduction in the budget-to-budget increase. So we're going to move on, and we're going to talk tonight about the People Personnel Services budget, and we broke it out into, this is all of the accounts related to students with disabilities. And then on the next slide, you'll see all the psych services and social work costs, um, on this slide. So in total, the, uh, Students with Disability Budget is going up slightly. It's going up by three point two four percent. Uh, the budget increase is thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. This is their budget for equipment, contractual conferences, related services, tuition. Um, you'll see all the way down the line, this is, this is what we spend, um, each year. And these increases, this thirty-nine thousand dollar increase is really being driven by three things. Um, we have a nineteen thousand dollar increase here that we needed to, um, put in the budget this year, just because we are running into a lot of stipulation agreements and settlement agreements. We also included, uh, a fifteen thousand dollar increase overall in related services. So if you take these three items and you just net them, it would be a fifteen thousand dollar increase to related services. And then we also have on the bottom here tuition. If you take these four lines and you, um, come up with a seven thousand dollar net increase in tuition. And that is the explanation for the thirty-nine thousand. Um, these are all for the psychologists and social workers, and they really only have some contractual costs related to uh, professional development and supplies that they purchased, and this, their budget is staying flat, and there's no increase overall. The next area we need to talk about is, uh, BOSI's. So the BOSI's proposed budget is also going up slightly. And you'll see, well, we have a five percent increase, so it's not slightly. Um, we have a sixty-six thousand dollar increase overall in BOSI's. And that is being driven also by, um, best, the special ed area where we did put some contingency in the budget for related services and some tuition. And you'll see that, um, what we did was, if, if you look at the previous year's budget, um, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we actually had five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars budgeted for BOSI's students', uh, special ed services. And for the current year, we reduced that down based on what our current needs were for the current year. So that five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars was reduced to two hundred and forty-nine thousand for the current year. And when you look at what we spent so far, we're right online to spend that, at least that two hundred and forty-nine thousand. So next year, just going through what we would need for next year, we felt that we needed to add a little contingency in that area for the related services and tuition. So next year, our proposed budget would go up to three hundred and five thousand four thirty-nine. Um, and then the other increase that is driving the sixty-six thousand is our library services. So what happened was, is some of our services that we're now paying through this budget code were actually paid for out of, um, our technology budget code. Well, we weren't purchasing it through BOSI's. We were actually purchasing through, um, it through our technology budget. So if you go through our technology budget, you'll actually see there's a seventeen thousand dollar decrease overall in our technology budget. And then we also had a sixty-five hundred dollar inc, uh, decrease in our library budget. So that thirty-two thousand dollar increase in our BOSI's budget for library services is being offset by almost twenty-four thousand dollars decrease in those other two areas. So through the years, you'll see our BOSI's budget has gone up. But the main reason for this is because we are trying to purchase more items from BOSI's. We are purchasing technology from BOSI's, and mostly all of our software now is purchased through BOSI's. Um, we talked about in the past, the, the reason why we did change, make this change was because, um, when EdLaw, uh, three D, I'm sorry, when EdLaw two D came into effect, um, we had to look at all of our contracts that we had with our service providers, and we found that BOSI's, their contracts actually protected us, um, in, and we, uh, and was like an umbrella, almost like an insurance umbrella for us to use their, their contracts for software purchases in order to have this protection from our vendors. So we moved a lot of the, um, expenses out of our current contractual technology codes and into our BOSI's budget. We do pay a little bit more in administrative fees for the service itself, but we do also get a lot of aid back. So we do get a lot of BOSI's aid back. Um, and this is just one of our statements that we get from BOSI's every year. And you'll see, this is, this is all of our aidable, um, expenses with BOSI's. And for twenty-twenty-one, we did get back a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in BOSI's aid. Um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we got back two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in BOSI's aid. This year, we're projected to get back a little under two hundred thousand, and next year, our projection is around two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Um, if you look at our final contract down at the bottom, this only includes, um, BOSI's aidable expenditures. So this seven hundred and fifty-one thousand does not reconcile with the million we showed you because it doesn't include any special ed services, and it doesn't include any of our facilities, um, costs that we need to pay BOSI's for. So overall, um, this is our budget shown by function or department. And this is just a description of what each functional area includes. So when you look at general support, general support does include all of Board of Education, the district clerk, superintendent's office, business office, facilities, security, insurance, public information, central data processing. This would include everything from salaries, equipment, materials and supplies, and contractual costs. The one thing that's ripping out is employee benefits. Um, you also see instruction transportation would also include all those areas. Um, but I also included the bu, the budget by object, which is a little bit easier to see where the increases are and in all the, um, in all the objects of expense. So because we pulled out that hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars worth of, um, pre-K salaries into the special aid fund, that reduced our budget-to-budget increase for salaries down to point seven six percent. So salaries overall are going up less than one percent uh, for next year. Employee benefits is eight percent increase, and employee benefits is strictly being driven by health insurance. Our health insurance costs have, um, we have experienced double-digit increases from night shift, um, in the current year, and also for next year, our, uh, night shift increase costs are going up by fifteen percent next year. So, um, that's why, that is the biggest increase to our budget this year, is really for health insurance. Um, the contractual costs and the materials and supplies costs, those increases really, um, encompass a lot of different things, utilities, fuel, alarm systems, um, material supplies, textbooks, insurance, professional service increases. So those two areas include a lot of different, um, things. We're going to include the detailed budget notes on the website um, sometime next week. So you could actually go in and see what, what, what is included in every single, um, increase. But just to give you a little bit of more explanation, um, if you look at inter-fund transfers, that three hundred and forty-two thousand dollar increase, that's made up of the three hundred thousand dollars that we're transferring to the capital fund to do the bathroom renovations. And it also includes a forty thousand dollar increase for some, our summer school handicap program, because those costs have also gone up. Um, we just went over the BOSI service increases. Our tuition is staying relatively flat, um, a seven thousand dollar increase in that area. Um, this equipment line is fifty-six thousand is really being driven by the, uh, truck that we're replacing for the facilities department. So that was a budget increase of about forty-five thousand, even though the truck does cost around sixty-five thousand overall. Uh, debt service, this is strictly interest on our tan. And we had a long conversation during the first budget presentation of how our tan costs have doubled um, just in the past year. So we really needed to actually double that line from a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand. Um, our textbook budget overall is, 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 um, going down slightly and computer software going down slightly. And if you look at the next slide, this will show you a better idea of what is increasing and what is made up of that four point five percent. Um, and you can see right down the line, this is, um, sorted in order of the increase. And, um, as I said, the employee benefits is rough over two percent of that, uh, four and a half percent increase. And, um, you can see everything else adds up to the two million dollars overall. So this is just historic information of our tax levy increases and budget increases. And you can see that in the past twelve years, we've only had, um, tax levy increases lower than the one point eight eight percent um, in two years. And you can also see that we've had budget-to-budget increases that have had to, um, be in the four percent range. So one year, we did need a four point nine five percent increase, but, um, but that year, we also had a three and a half percent tax levy increase. So, um, this is really, you know, it's a, we, our budget increase is much higher than our tax levy increase. But I think that, um, we explained the reason for that. We explained that we're generating additional revenue. We're going ahead and, um, we're able to fund our reserves and we've and our financial condition is very, very healthy. So. Okay, so we're going to go through the cost of some of the propositions on the ballot. So there are going to be several propositions on the ballot. The first proposition is going to be to approve the budget for next year, propose, approve the proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we estimate that if voter approved, this will cost taxpayers about sixty-seven dollars and thirteen cents per year for a home valued at one million dollars. We also have a proposition to authorize an appropriation for the general use, maintenance, and capital improvement financing of the Sag Harbor Historical Museum. So that's seventy-five thousand dollars, and it's tax levy each year. And I calculated that that would cost taxpayers around six dollars and forty-eight cents per year for a home valued at a million dollars. We also have a proposition to establish a capital reserve for technology equipment purchases, security system upgrades, and technology infrastructure upgrades. Um, the establishment of this reserve fund will not have any impact on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget or tax levy. This will just give us a mechanism to start saving money for these types of upgrades and improvements in the future. And, and also an expenditure from this reserve. So if we do fund this reserve, and we do have a project that we would like to use the funds for, we would need voter approval to use any funds that are set aside in this reserve. And then we have our final proposition, which is to purchase the Morrison Street properties using capital reserve funds that we currently have available. And also, um, issuing serial bonds to fund this, to fund the six million dollars of, uh, the purchase price. So approval of this proposition will not have any impact on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget or tax levy. If the project is approved by the voters on May sixteenth, the district will begin the process of seeking a six million dollar bond anticipation note in July. In addition, three million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand will be withdrawn from the district's facilities improvement capital reserve fund. And there's no requirement to replenish these reserve funds. So these reserve funds are there. Once spent and authorized spending, we don't need to replenish them. Um, but we do usually add to this reserve at the end of every year. The six million dollar ban can be issued for up to five years before it must be converted into bonds. And interest on the ban is due in year one, and principal must be paid down in years two through five. And the district can convert the debt into bonds at any time during the five-year period if interest rates become more favorable. As we all know, right now, interest rates are not the most favorable. But as you can see, going down the line, um, the first budget impact we will feel is during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. During that year, we will have to pay interest on the ban, and the tax impacts approximately eight, eighteen dollars and fourteen, thirteen cents. This is based on current asset values, current equalization rates. Um, for twenty-five, twenty-six, once we have to start paying down principal and interest, that payment is going to go up to twenty-eight ninety-four per year. Um, for the next four years, it'll stay about the same. And then once they convert to bonds, you'll see that we will start having to pay principal and interest on that bond, and the tax levy impact is about forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents per year. Um, overall, this is assuming we have a five-year bond anticipation note outstanding and a fifteen-year serial bond. And, um, you can see over the course of the, the, um, outstanding loan, it would cost taxpayers overall seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. That would be from, um, going forward from twenty-twenty-four all the way to twenty forty-four. Uh, and you can see the additional, uh, cost to taxpayers. The additional cost will be, will slightly go up each for the first few years. But then, of course, that cost is already there for the remaining years, so there won't be any additional cost for those, uh, those out years for the bond.
And the, and the cost per year, once, once it levels out after the five-year bond anticipation note period on a house valued at a million dollars is forty-one, forty-seven?
Yes, per year.
Thanks.
And this, um, we're going to have another meeting on April nineteenth, and, um, that meeting is actually on a Wednesday, I believe, right? It's not Monday, the usual Monday meeting. And we're going to review the entire budget, and we're also going to adopt up the operating budget that evening and adopt the property tax report card. And we also have a budget hearing scheduled for May eighth. And then the, um, statewide uniform, uniform budget vote, of course, is on May sixteenth. Um, and as I said, I will include the full budget and all of the budget notes on the website right right now. All the presentations are on the website, and, um, everything else will be added as we, as we move along next few weeks. Um, is there any questions? Can I get to any of the slides?
But the, no, not a question, but the universal pre-K funding is awesome. Like, just thinking about how long this has been in the making, and I just remember when I ran for the fourth, five, five years ago, and we hadn't even broken ground on Stellamaris yet, and people would ask, why, why, what, how do you feel about it if you're running for the ward? And I said, I'm so for it because I want to see a full-day pre-K. And so now we have building, we have a pre-K, and we're getting funded for it. That's
Yeah, it's unbelievable. I mean, to, to get that hundred and thirteen thousand dollar influx this year was really helpful. And then for next year to have all, you know, to get that amount, the hundred and seventy, almost hundred and seventy-three thousand for next year is, is really great. It really helps, helps the program.
Great.
All right.
You're welcome. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda. Um, may I please have a motion to approve items seven point two through ten point seven with the one caveat that eight point one and eight point two are those audit corrective plans where we're going to be voting on those plans as amended and not the versions that are in the consent agenda.
And then the denims wouldn't be separate, right? Just through time zone.
Yes.
Just confirm.
The ten point eight would be a separate vote?
Yes.
Do you, are you doing it online or doing, just do it manually?
It's too much of a
Oh, okay. So can I get a motion?
For me?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? On? Which side?
After you vote a little bit.
Okay. All in favor? Okay.
All right.
Then on ten point eight, um, can I get a motion to approve the, um, extracurricular track for the robotics team?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm standing.
Can you get the reason why?
Something we, um,
Still have four.
We have four.
We still have four, okay. Yeah, so all in favor?
I, all right.
All right.
All opposed? Zero? One of standing?
I just wanted to congratulate, uh, Margaret Comer on, uh, her retirement. It's, uh, item ten point two. She served at the middle school, high school nurse for a number of years, and prior to that, I downed Stellamaris. And so I just want to thank her for her service and wish her continued health and happiness in retirement.
Uh, next is committee reports. Uh, do we have someone from diversity and inclusion that wanted to say anything?
That's great. Hi. Um, Betty Rayno, so the committee chair person. I do have, um, some notes, some notes that I'd like to share.
Betty, you want to come up to the podium, please, thanks?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Betty Rayno, so I care, I chair the diversity and inclusion committee, which is comprised of also three additional subcommittees as opposed to just the general membership. And I do have some notes that were shared, were shared with me. The first is professional development. Um, we did have a woman come in the fall who presented um, from an organization called Be the People, and we've been trying to connect with her, um, to try and have additional professional development through remote Google Meet webinar, but she's had some, um, personal issues that she hasn't been able to commit to. So we are currently looking to pursue, um, pairing up with another organization called Race to be Human, which offers professional development to faculty, families, and programming for students grade five and up. So that's something we're hoping to pursue in the near future. Um, the multicultural committee, it was decided to postpone, um, our event because of COVID concerns still being prevalent. In the past, this event took place largely, um, by way of, um, providing foods from different cultures, different ethnicities. And because of COVID, we felt, um, it would be wise to kind of pause on that. Um, obviously, um, with everyone's apprehension and, and foods being prepared in their home. We were looking to pair with local restaurants, but with the seeds and upon us, that proved to be difficult as well because they had trouble committing to providing, um, food for our events. So what we are hoping to do is pursue something for next school year, which gives us the gift of time to plan it out, make it a more thoughtful process, and possibly looking to move away from the food course.
to move away from the food portion and make it more about history, culture and an entertainment type of event. So we're looking to do that hopefully for next school year in the fall. Um, classroom libraries has been working to expand access to readers by implementing Sora at Pearson. Sora is a student reading app that provides access to ebooks and audiobooks. Currently, all students are logged into Sora and util- utilizing the virtual library. Um, Janie Ma, the librarian, has also been helping students get public library cards to expand their text selection con Sora. At the elementary school, um, we've been planning on inventorying the diversity and inclusion texts that were donated. Our goal is to develop a circulation system that increases access to all texts. And then last, um, the student diversity and inclusion subcommittee is a committee that meets very often. But because they often discuss very sensitive topics, we really want to be respectful of privacy and confidentiality. So they don't often share with us the things that they're talking about as it should be. Um, that's everything on my end.
Thanks.
No problem. Any questions?
Oh, thanks. Thank you so much.
No problem. My pleasure.
And happy birthday to Ariel.
Thank you. Very much.
Okay, um, and public input number two. Is there anybody in the audience for public input two? Please come up.
Please write your first and last name while I'm like.
I will. Thanks. Hello, everybody. Michelle Leo here. Um. Go Marsden. Um, I'm actually here tonight about um safety and security. Yeah, um, I am concerned on many levels and my concerns remain. I waited until public input number two on purpose because I wanted to hear what you said first, Mr. Nichols. Um, however, as I have mentioned in a meeting previously, I think that um our district's um approach to security has been tepid at best. Those are my words from our last meeting and I said that too. I think it's been almost a year. Since that last one. So I want to reiterate my concerns. I um agree with Mrs. Sophie and that I am no expert in this matter like she has outlined. Um, but what I do know is I've visited many other schools on Long Island. And I know that our security measures um pale in comparison to other districts that have similar um sizes as us. So I would think, if nothing else, we could at least come up to that level, um, which is not the case. I have been to numerous board of ed meetings and in order to get in the building in the evening, I waved and say, BOE, and he goes, library. I came during school hours very recently. And what was handed to me after a confusion about why I was present, no determination of who I was or what. I said, I was here for the public board of ed meeting. And the gentleman goes, huh? Pulled out a white sticker and asked me to write my name on it and then sent me on my way. I offered my license, which is typical for every school I have entered on this island and in other locations today. He said it was not necessary. So I am no expert, but I do know that I'm not comfortable with what our district is. I'm glad that there's a consultant on board. I think that this is um a delay. And I think that we continue, as I've said before in the past on security, to stand on the fact that we are a small town and that bad things don't happen in small towns. Sandy Hook was just Sandy Hook once upon a time. I don't want Sag Harbor to now become a name like Columbine, Sandy Hook, all the others. We can do better for our kids.
I got it. Anyone here? Back open. Scott, timeline.
I have a long last name, so it takes a while. Um, my, my remarks tonight, um, were somewhat undermined by the robotics team presentation. Because, yeah, my daughter was in robotics when there were only two girls. Now there are a lot more girls. Um, she's a successful software engineer right now. And just hearing this, you know, security, and I don't like having an adversarial relationship spoke, you know, really. Um, my kids have done a lot out of this school. But um, my only request is that officially Morrison Street, um, you're not taking a stand on what it will be developed into. But you've, you've always wanted an athletic field, a plastic athletic field. And it just would be helpful for people to know what they're going on if they were fully informed. And so, thank you.
I want to ask you for public input. Uh, anybody online?
People online.
Okay. And just, um, I think, you know, we've talked about how we have a duty to correct public input that is incorrect. So I think the statement saying that we've always wanted a plastic playing field is just incorrect.
Yeah, no, I think that's absolutely right. I take exception of that. I mean, we, we very deliberately didn't vote on this in the board because it was meant to be a community input. So we haven't talked about our individual opinions, but I would, just for the record, say I'm a hard no one to. The board does not have a across-the-board opinion that we should have to. And we don't even know if this should be an athletic field. That was governed by the fact that it's CDF and it had to be open space. What we would have, if we're able to, uh, you know, pass the bonds, is we'll have time to actually have proper community input and really look at this holistically. This is the last piece of open contiguous land to the school. And I, I just can't see a scenario where it's bad for the school to own that because it's the only chance of the school to have addition.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, he's been making false statements about this since day one. So record will speak for itself.
Um, can I get a motion to convene in to executive session to discuss contracts? Please. All in favor?
All right.
And uh, we will not come out of this meeting and vote on anything else. So can I get, I guess, I don't need to get the motions to jump over um Rustia to running these things, but whatever Brian usually says.
I think you should.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.